Okay, so I'd like to call this Operations City meeting to an end. And Sal, can you give some updates?
Sure. I have a handout that we put together at Central Office with Winters and her staff. This is Central Office staff, this is office staff. I'll wait till you get there. Basically, what this sheet represents, at the top of the page, represents about $1,828,229 that was presented to the mayor as our sustained services, focus area, and strategic plan budget. Then, what you will note is all the reductions to bring us to a point where we can begin our discussion. We reduced, this reflects all the reductions for all the strategic plan items, all of the focus area items, with the exception of, and I'll draw your attention to the bottom, we did leave in two items that we feel are essential to move forward next year are the advanced manufacturing items, because we have a course that we're running in the fall for students.
You started by saying that.
It's fifth from the bottom.
Five, eight, nine.
And fourth from the bottom, the senior seminar textbooks, because that's a course that we teach for seniors. So those are the two items that we remain, that remained in from those other areas of focus areas and strategic plan. Everything else we reduced. You'll also note that we have reduction under, I'm sorry.
Should I wait?
Yeah, let me, let me fill it up.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Let me just make an additional reduction. We did, since the last coming in, we had light insurance savings of $33,735. We had a vehicle lease that we no longer are going to do at $7,450. We do have a reduction in transportation, not that we're doing away with it, it's just the savings that was found in $25,000 for the IST program. The telephone service, we believe we're going to have a savings of $8,000 there. The next couple of items you'll see are related to the excess cost sharing. We dropped it down to 73% initially, but we believe the reimbursement rate will be 78%. So there is a net increase of $135,000. That's for the special education funds, so we had to increase our budget to accommodate that. Electric, there's an increase of $42,281. We did also include in the sustained services, and this might have been your question, this you forget.
It was.
About the BOAC teacher. We do, under mandate, have to add one additional BOAC teacher or Ag Science teacher because of the increase in population, which is dictated by the building projects, so that's $94,594 including benefits. We have, we then reduce that by the $30,000 from the grant, so the actual net increase for the Ag Science teacher is $64,594. We get a one-time grant to put towards that through the federal government, the Carl Perkins Grant, which is how it's just to offset that fund. We also did include the two Smart Start Paris, because we're going to be expanding the pre-K program at schools to be determined, so that is $82,700. The transportation for medical careers, it's not where we're cutting it, it's just that this coaching was able to work with this Winters to reduce the amount of money necessary for next year. So there's still transportation for medical careers, it's just it's expensive. We did reduce the world language teacher that we were recommending for K2, so that's We had substitutes for coaches, we're going to reduce that at $50,000. Substitutes for the innovation team, we're reducing that at $50,000. The Bridge Academy, which was the $16,200 unfortunately. And then I said the adds of the manufacturing materials and the senior textbooks. We also have these last three items, which are adds to our budget per special education, public tuitions and private tuitions, for a combined total of an additional $85,658. And then excess costs, another increase of expenditure that we have to add to our budget at $55,399. So those are all the additional increases that we would have to accrue. So the total at this point would be, the reduction that we still have to get to in order to meet the mayor's new budgetary number of a 1.8% increase is $687,219. So that's the number that we're at to start with at this point.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I know it's Wednesday and it's kind of short in this. We're going to go through some of the internal pieces and have some discussion. I would ask if you just hold your questions to the end, because you might get answered, because we're going to ask the office staff to give a little bit of information and we're going to have some questions that you also might have that might get answered. So if you'll just bear with us, we will absolutely leave time for questions for all of you. Okay? Thank you.
One other point I do want to make, that in this budget, this is assuming, this is assuming the reduction of the 27 pair educators to offset the expenditure of the special education teachers, as well as there were nine special education teachers and then four taking the form of coaches that were part-time or that were substituted, filled by permanent subs. That's why the subs were cut, making those full-time positions. So I just want to be fully transparent, and again, it's taking the 27 special education pairs, which was identified through the Administrator SWAT analysis, as a trade-off for the nine special education teachers and the four full-time instructional coaches. No additional instructional coaches that we presently have, just making them not filled by substitutes, which has been a challenge, as I know some of you have heard in the public, having long-term subs in the position rather than the teachers. So that's where that falls. So that's already included in this process, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
I just want to make a point that when you mentioned the pre-K, something about pre-K.
The Smart Start pair educators.
Yeah.
The teachers are covered by the grant.
And I wanted to point that out, that that is going to fund it as well.
Yep, yep. The other reduction here that I apologize, I know our teachers in our room will be thrilled about this one. Bloom Board is still being used, but we don't have to pay for it, which is a good thing. The state is going to pay for it another year, so that was a reduction we made of $31,262. So we're able to, that was, it was going to be a lot of money.
Thanks. So I just wanted to be clear, Sal, you list the oil tank removal ADA design and the SSS as...
Those are all being covered by the mayor's CRA.
CRA, okay, so that's still going to be done, but under the CRA. I just want to be clear on that.
Right.
Those go under the CRA, they're not under the budget, that's separate.
Correct.
Yeah, just want to make sure it's clear on that.
Doctor, I have a question about the world languages. Are we completely cutting that program or just reducing the teacher?
Well, that was to expand the program. The world language, it was to expand it K2. We're still maintaining the 3.5, but not expanding to K2.
Okay, thank you.
So the, so I just, the only things that remain, and this is just for my brain, the BOAC, the, excuse me, Ag Science teacher addition, but that's state mandated, that stays in. And the advanced manufacturing and the senior seminar textbooks.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So moving forward, I would like to know what the Central Office staff has for suggestions.
What, we've been fortunate over the last several years that we haven't had to have this deep of a conversation. So what I was recommending, I was for the board to decide, is I would recommend that the board provide us with some guidelines, so as we look to potentially our budget areas, we can actually hold them off to those guidelines to make sure that they're leaving that, and then bring those to you for further consideration. So kind of guiding principles, if it may, if it were. So we kind of have something to go back to. So we just, we can, I'll make note of them.
But for me, class size, it's always been the, I'm, I would like to see that we can adhere to that if at all possible.
I totally echo Kathy's point. Class size is something that I, you know, I think we as a board of typical, right, and I would say cuts that, you know, I mean, I say this tongue-in-cheek, because it's all subject to interpretation, but it's far away from providing, obviously, but again, affecting students directly. If we end up that way, I mean, I guess the least impacted programming, again, I say this not like hardly on any level, so least impacted, I guess that's, I don't know, I might come back, but if that comes to mind. Before you finish, I just have to make it clear, I'm sorry for this group. I actually have tickets to go to a show and I need to leave at 7:30 tonight, so it's not that I don't think this is important, and I do, and I probably won't get a chance to hear, excuse my back, everybody.
Just a moment.
Yeah, I won't get the chance to necessarily hear, but I'm hoping my counterparts will fill me in, but please understand, I'm sorry, I just, it's last minute for all of us, so you do the best you can do. So I apologize. Thanks.
I raise Fran's hand. Anything that directly affects students, I would not want to see those areas cut, so if we could keep it as far, because it's far away from what impacts students as far as, again, the class size and the amount of staff that we have to meet their needs, those types of things I would appreciate, because we need those in place to provide the best education for our students.
Yeah, sure. Actually, I just looked it up one year. I think that unfortunately, it's certain to me that we're in for a very difficult financial period. It's not just, this is what we're seeing tonight. Unfortunately, I believe this is going to continue over a long period of time. And it's a terrible thing, but unfortunately, I believe it's the reality of it. And I think that anything we're doing, we should be thinking we're going to be facing the same situations next year and the year after. And I think we should look at this whole thing over a three-year period of time and make all our decisions on what's best over a three-years period of time of very difficult financial conditions. What's best to, as effectively as we can, execute our mission statement and our strategic plan, which of course is always in the run about the kids. But unfortunately, many of you hear me say it, but I'll say it again, because I'm a financial person, I'm trained this way, is that we had the mayor come in a couple of years ago, and we're all saying, you know, we never know how much money you're going to get. So I suggested bring the mayor in, I'll probably tell you, I've been doing it for 29 years, right? So we brought him in, and he brought his kind of control, control in the other sector. Brought him in and they told us, and they said, there's three things that determine how much money you get. One is the growth in the grant list. The second is the change in federal and state funding. And the third one is social security increase. That's how he figures how much the basis for which it increases taxes and tax rates. But those are the three pieces. And unfortunately, I don't think there's any way that the next three years are going to be better than the last three years in those areas, and unfortunately, I think they're going to be, they're going to be worse. And if you look at them, you know, here's the components, I took a look at this today. So the first one I mentioned, grant list, this year the grant list is actually going down by 1%. We've been in a revaluation, but if you take that out, our grant list is actually decreasing by 1%. Last year it only increased by seven tenths of a percent, and the year before it only increased by eight tenths of a percent, less than 1%. So going forward over the next three years, I gotta believe we're close to zero, unfortunately on it, right? So there's one of the three components at zero. What's the next component that I mentioned? Next component of change in state federal funding. Well, you know, we can only hope there, but I took a look at this today, anyway, unfortunately. And so what's the projection? You know, this verb we all know in paper, they're talking about a deficit of about $140 million. Next year they're projecting a deficit in the state of $733 million, the year after $2.1 billion, and the year after $2.4 billion. Those are huge numbers, just in proportion, that's 1%, that deficit's 1% of the state's budget this year. 5% of the state's budget this year, and it's 10% the year after, and 11% the year after that. So there's a big negative number, right? And the third one is, what's the social security increase? Social security increase is, as we know, this year was zero, it's a function of inflation. Year before is 1.7, 1.5. So unfortunately, when you add all these things up, I don't see them coming to much more than zero over the next three years, and I think that's what we have to deal with. It's awful, but I think that's the reality of it. And I think that our role as a board is to direct, provide direction, look beyond one point in time, look down the road and over the hill. So I just ask that whatever decisions we make are made with a three-year look forward and are made as best as we can to preserve what we say, the reason we say we're here, which I think we very well summarize in our mission statement, and try to diminish our strategic plan. I've looked through, I've looked through this, unfortunately.
May I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So what I'm thinking is, because we're, I guess, fortunate that we do do projections for two years, that we would take where we end up, how we get to this point this year that we have to get to 1.88, extrapolate out for you based on previous assumptions, show you that, and then, yeah, feedback, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So for 17, 18, okay.
Pretty much just echo what everyone else is saying. It is a pretty scary transition, which we're currently in, and, you know, it doesn't look like it's getting much better. So focusing on the best programming, you know, that we can possibly offer under those circumstances would be, you know, my recommendations and what we can kind of achieve together.
And this is not going to be a popular comment on any level, but our budget is made up of, what, 90?
80%.
80% of fixed costs, basically, which is salary's benefits. I mean, that's, I'm sorry?
And the, you know, the lights and...
Right, right, right.
No describing.
Our discretionary income is very, very, very tiny, and I, like I said, this isn't a popular thing, but I mean, it's, it becomes a matter of retaining a job or potentially raises, and I understand it's negotiated, and I understand, you know, again, I don't know what the answer is, but it's, it's the elephant in the room. I mean, it is our, we have no control over our fixed costs.
Yes. Just so you know, and there'll be a letter in the package this week, a composite letter, I sent out a letter to every, all nine meetings, leaders, asking if they would be considering or would take into consideration meeting with us to discuss any concessions at this point. We did hear back from the clerical union, which we're very pleased to hear from, and we plan to be with them next week. So it just went out yesterday, so I...
Yeah, it's really, I'm just adjusting the elephant in the room.
But I did, but I did want to let you know that we did take that act, we had to do that a few years ago.
Right.
We went right out, we sent that out immediately, and, you know, we'll take it once ever again.
That's all I can ask of everybody, frankly, it's a lot to take in.
Have me interested in one other. This unfortunately, is now, to me it seems, I don't know if you're living in this field, that the best way to, to be able to free up resources, I almost say free them up, but most effectively utilize the resources we have, I believe is to take a fresh look in the way we do it. Take each one of the functions, each one of the groups of employees, the parents, wherever we can get involved, to just sit back and take a fresh look, as though all of a sudden we just landed on Mars, and we said, okay, we got to open up school. How do we want to do it? How are we going to do everything there is to it? And you never know, you know, what can shape out, right? And as we can be more effectively utilizing people and resources to do things, to accomplish what we're trying to do, we may be, we may find there's a, there's a lot of food there.
I appreciate that comment, because that was actually, that was exactly what I was thinking. So we'll look at how we do things.
And those things are most effectively done when everybody's involved.
Yeah.
So again, one of the challenges that that is where we would like to get to, and that's our whole partnership that we're trying to...
And that's really, right?
Development, developing the strategic partnership there. So the challenge is that that takes time to grow, and we're kind of caught between, you know, the next eight weeks, pretty much.
But again, I would ask that we look at it for a three-year period of time, because we're facing probably worse, we're going to be facing this next year.
Right, right, right. That was a future conversation.
The immediate plan, as all of you know, we've tried to approach it a little differently this year, based on some of the work that we've been doing through the SWAT analysis and strength, weaknesses, opportunities and threat steps, where actually the special education recommendation came from, as well as a few other recommendations. That was done through the Administrator team, they were shared with the building level, we talked through them with the union exec board, kind of went through the writing things. So that was the first step. What we are going to be working on, actually tomorrow with administrators, and then we're going to be sharing the state process with our union leaders, we're meeting with them on 8:30 Monday morning, so we have all 99 union leaders that will be there, looking at the state process, looking at it through, again, the lens of a student, because that's who we're, you know, our focus is, the day and the life of a student, and looking at it as a process, a review, from the time they leave their house to the time they return home, and looking at segments in time of what happens in their life in our system throughout the course of the day. Number one, looking at the events, and then secondly, looking at the resources, looking at whether or not their human resources, looking at whether or not their capital resources, whether or not their curricular resources, technical resources, whatever it may be, identifying where those resources are, and then doing really a gap analysis, looking at what your present resources are, and what the real resources are potentially needed, and whether or not, like Jay's saying, can we do business a little differently? Now, this is just a very quick, what Jay's suggesting is something that we want to, is a journey, and we want to embark upon, but we want to at least have that opportunity and to relate it back to the SWAT analysis, so that the buildings could look at those to see, okay, is there something now that might, it might not have risen to the top at that point because of different context, a different mindset, but now is there a difference? We also have been keeping since January, the administrators have been working on efficiency journals, so they've been looking at specific processes in their schools, the administrator processes, clerical processes, transportation processes, they've been looking at that. We also asked all of our union presidents, we had a couple here this evening, that they were to also think in a similar way, and that was actually evident last week, looking at the presentation of the services staff. And I know we have a few coming from the secretarial or clerical union that are going to be sharing some ideas. So we're trying to begin that structure, and I think the key that I resonate with me with what Jay says and what Jay shared with me over the course of this year especially is that this is about a community, this is not just about one group, this is about all of us working together. And we had a very thoughtful conversation at Central Office yesterday, where traditionally the burden of the cuts have come on in Central Office. We, and maybe people think that it's not a burden, but it really, really is a burden. And we sit there and we automatically start going through, and we start looking at the low-hanging fruit, but really, there's not much low-hanging fruit left. And like Jay said, if you're looking at this over three years, this is not about low-hanging fruit, this is about changing the way we do business.
It's a tough one. And the other, the other thing is that I think morale is such a good part of it, and it's really hard, it's very easy for everybody to get down, and it's the natural thing to do, but, but it's so important that, we're not going to get through this without good morale, and good morale ain't easy to generate when you're doing it, but I really believe that what we're seeing here is, it's been what, a six, seven-year delay, but I really believe what we're seeing here is the effect of what caused the financial problems in 2009. And that's why I believe this thing is just going to be a one-shot deal. I think the effect of that, which is a long-term effect, is now finally killing us here in this public sector. You know, all that crazy money that people were making and all that, especially in Connecticut, which is very dependent on personal income tax, and coming out of Fairfield County, right? And that's changed, and now it's changed, and Dodd-Frank changed, and rules and other things have changed the rules, and they're not making a dime a month anymore, right? And that's affecting the economy, that's why the state, they don't, month by month they change their projections, because they wait to see what comes into the estimated payments. Those people aren't making that dime a month. The other thing that's happening is a lot of them are retiring from the state now. But anyway, so I think it's a longer, it's a longer-term effect. And when this hit us, because it was 1490, over, a family-owned manufacturing company, when this, when 2009 happened and hit us, and we had nothing to do with anything that was going on leading up to 2009, our sales went down by 45%. And I said to Fred Overhui, I said, Fred, you ever seen anything like this? He said, Jay, I never, no, I've seen anything like this. He said, I never dreamt about, I dreamt anything this bad. And I said, Fred, I never thought I'd see the day, right? We have to worry more about our banks than our banks worry about us. But we had a 45% decline in our business, and we're a family-owned company who are very concerned about our employees, we had lots of young, generations of people, we in there we support, we do. And we had to lay off 20% of our workforce, and the remaining everybody else, including the owners, going a week, a month without pay for about five months. But the key, but the morale remained good, and it wasn't awful, and obviously it didn't for over 20% of people who are there no longer, but it was so key, and we worked so hard, but the employees were harder than we did. And they understood, and they understood that, hey, you know, we're going to do all we can, there's certain things we can't do, we don't know when these things are going to start back up. But the only way we're going to get through it is if we all stick together, and we all try to support each other in the cause, and of trying to get out of this thing and go forward, and we do the best we can, in this case, the students, in our case, our customers and employees' families, but this is different. Just like that was, I'm afraid, that this is, again, the effects of this, the ripple effects of that, and it's different, morale is, morale is so important.
And the challenge that we face, and I'm sure it's similar in many aspects in business, but in education, we're constantly faced with the need to grow. We can't stand still.
Yeah.
We can't perfect a product and just sell that one product and make a million dollars off of it, or whatever, or my money. We have to continue to perfect every product that comes into us, and they're never the same. And so the fact is that, you know, the tendency in those times would be to become, okay, no new things, we can't do this, we can't do that, because that means more, but in reality, if we don't do, we don't make those changes, we're potentially putting ourselves in a situation where it's more detrimental, because we've become less relevant. So it's a, it's a challenge, because that does, that's our natural thing. I mean, I know, when I was reflecting on this last night and this morning, unfortunately, Sean and Cindy group circled some 3:00 AM meetings, but when I was reflecting on this, you know, my immediate, my immediate thought was, okay, well, we don't do this, we don't do this, we don't do this, and then I'm thinking to myself, okay, well, then that takes away this opportunity for this student and this teacher, what is in the shooter? And then, you know, when do you stop doing that, and what do you end up needing? You mean, you don't, you move away from your mission and vision, rather than towards it?
There's an article in the Springs New York Times by Joseph Staley, he's a columnist out of Columbia, and, I know, I'm, and he's talking about skills, that everybody waiting in all these political things, they're saying, if you don't have, you didn't read these trade deals and everything else, these jobs would be here. And he said, there's only those skills, there's no skill, lose those skill, no skill, jobs would come. They're born, in the productivity stages across countries, they're not coming back. The only jobs that are going to enable people to develop a decent lifestyle are high school, are high school jobs. The only way they're going to develop the skills, we're going to take those jobs, is writing about it for the state. It's this one mastery of this learning, you know, transferable skills, but without those, they don't stand a chance to get those jobs. So I completely agree, we can't, we can't reach that.
It's tough though, because it's a natural tendency, you do get frustrated, and, you know, it's not personal, it's just, you do get frustrated.
It's awful. It's awful. But what things do we do? We've got, we've got to do the best we can, or what we add, right? And it's, it's tough.
Yes, Karen.
But I think we have to be... But I think we have to be a little hopeful because what we have is pretty good. The staff that we have is pretty good.
Oh, I know, okay.
And we have built capacity in this school district, and we have some very smart, creative people that I think will help us to weather what's going on. I feel you say that.
I'm just providing a financial perspective of it.
And I think that when we move forward with new programs, to not think of them so much as new programs, but we're kind of enhancing programs we already have. So while they're new, we're kind of getting rid of something that maybe wasn't working before and changing the way we're doing things anyway, so.
Other, do you want me to recap what I have so far? Just if I may, or if I can try, sure, I didn't capture everything. I was the number one, this class size, the first thing, I shouldn't say the number one, the first thing was to keep this class size maintained at the levels we have. Reductions as far away from students as possible, least impact on program reductions if necessary to make it off. Direct effect of students should be considered last. So, you know, there's a lot of, what I took that as if there were, if there was a lot of impact or direct impact on students, that should be considered last. If there's lesser impact on students, then it would be considered prior to that. This is not a one-year decision, we need to look at it over a three-year period. So we're looking at getting to the point we need to, the 1.8 this year, but then also extrapolating out the next two years, trying to keep into, in that 1.8 range and not lower, to be honest. Right, yeah, in place of maybe a 1.2 or 1.5, okay?
I just take the mayor's point out.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, all right, I was hopeful. Fine, but, and then best program we can offer under these tough circumstances and fresh look, at least, other...
Stay true to the mission.
Stay true to the mission, in the opposite.
Right.
Yep.
So inspired through innovative and engaging experiences that we all learn to pursue and discover the personal best. I know it can be easy, but you may just stay true to that.
And getting as much voices we can have for time in the open process. Other, other ideas?
Just follow-up letters to, if you don't hear from unions, potential follow-up letters?
Okay.
I don't know. Yeah, no, that's fine.
Yes, one other thing too is evaluate efficiencies. I think that was something that was kind of discussed, maybe checking that the way things are, you know, procedurally going and if there's any, you know, efficiency change or efficiency improvement in the process.
What, the only other thing I just didn't know before we, before I turned it back, is are there any, and I know that you've gotten this news Monday...
Right.
Or Tuesday, and you informed everybody. Had, does any, does any board member have any area right now, not that they want to put on the table, but for us to further look at, any specific area that you would want more information on in terms of?
I do, and it's not just because I need a refresh.
Sure.
I was looking at the page, the employees, we have a little category called specialists, and I just don't know what a specialist is.
Okay, so we'll break that out?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a mark.
Yeah, no, we'll break that down.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience have any questions they want to ask at this time? Comments, concerns?
So what, so, yeah, I'm sorry, Jeremy, but maybe I'm jumping the gun to say next steps in terms of when we reconvene again. I mean, so I just wanted, in my mind, we meet again, I mean, obviously we were charging you and obviously we'll give a chance for the public to speak, obviously. We'll meet again for, you know, you guys...
Would you want me to go over the timeline?
I don't know, well, that's...
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
There's, part of it is our timeline, part of it is the town council.
Right, exactly.
We have heard, but I don't believe I've gotten an agenda, is that next Wednesday, like they have done last year, there's going to be a budget workshop at which they will set the motions to be approved on Tuesday, May tenth.
So wait, May fourth, though?
May fourth is the, the town council meeting at which they'll set the motion that will then be approved on May tenth. So that's just part of the process because that'll determine really what the reduction is, because the mayor is going to recommend the additional reduction, town council will review that, they'll set the motions.
So, and I say this, I kind of know the answer, but I'm saying it to the group and, you know, for the press or whatever, it is conceivable, frankly, that on the fourth, town council could potentially say, I want to make less cuts for the board debt, or I want more cuts for the board debt. So I just want to be clear on that. We're working with a number that will, will know the fourth, is that really our number?
Yeah, because the mayor explained to us on Monday that the fourth is the day because he has to put together all the documents for the newspaper because it's a hearing on the budget. So they're not going to change on the tenth, at least that's what we got the impression that it would be set on the fourth, it would go in the newspaper, any discussion about that would happen on the fourth. So on the ninth, when we have our operations meeting, that's when we would be presenting our initial, I guess, ideas based on conversations with as many union groups as we can to get closer, if not get to, the mayor's set number, 1.8. We also have another operations meeting set for the following Monday, on May sixteenth, at which time we'll present additional options for the board to consider, take feedback, come back with more information, go through the iterative process. Ideally, we would like to have the board, because of the circumstances that we're in, out of respect to potential staff that may be laid off, as well as our need to make sure we go through the appropriate process of assuring that we go through a rigging process if that's necessary, occurs in an appropriate manner. We would like the board to approve its budget at the May board meeting, not the June, because the June board meeting is actually the last Friday in June. That does not allow us to have conversations, our teachers, the good news is we get out on June seventeenth, the bad news is we hit out on June seventeenth.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have the appropriate conversations in enough time to make people, teachers, clerical, whomever, maybe par educators, food service, whomever, those conversations in an appropriate manner. So that's what we wanted, I know it's a little different, it's a change in order, and I apologize, but we actually had a conversation with the union president for the teachers' union, he agreed with us on this, because he knows that it's a, it's a process, that it's a need, he and another union person will sit and they'll make sure that they have all information correct. And like Roxanne said, though, next Wednesday night, there could be a conversation that maybe the town council would not make a significant reduction, as significant a reduction as represented by the mayor.
I, I, I wouldn't hold my pro...
No, but I'm, I mean, but I'm being honest, I think, you know, everybody's got to have
a little pain in this, and, you know, municipal side is having their pain too, but the government side, this isn't all about board of ed taking all the hits. Clearly, every department on the government side is having some type of meeting along these lines.
Yeah.
So anything's possible.
So that would be the timeline that we're coming forward, no, if there's a need for meetings in between, of course, we'll do that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
How much of the $687,000 shortfall attributed to the subsidy given to food service?
It's approximately $190,000. $106,000.
Yes?
Hi, Anne Rowland Letterly, eighty-five Monawee Trail, Moran teacher, she a parent and vice president of the WEA. Ms. Clifton, you had asked that we break down what specialists were. I would also ask that potentially we start taking a look at our, our family tree, if you will, like what the chain of command is, you know, as, you know, as we branch out down further and further, that might prove some clarity as to what, as we move forward looking at efficiencies.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Don Kennedy, Bull Avenue. I'm just a ex-consultant who used to help companies when they were in crunches like you guys are right now. And I agree totally with what you said in terms of looking at a, taking a fresh look at everything. And one of the things that we used to tell companies to do is to basically form three buckets, and one of the buckets is the quick hits. In other words, what can you save today? And there's, your biggest number of resources are probably your teaching staff, because they're out there day in, day out, they see what's going on, and they can come back and give you some items that they feel that you can fix right away. And I would, I would open your ears to everything and anything that they have to say. The second one is usually like the six-month bucket. And the six-month bucket is something that will take minor reengineering, minor changes, but again, will save you some money if you, if you do it over six months. And then on your long-term, your two-year, three-year, there are some improvements that will take you two to three years. And I agree with what you say, that this is a major step where you would have to actually reengineer or do something totally different, take a totally fresh approach to an item. And, you know, I, this, this is a serious problem, and I, and I think your numbers are conservative, because the, the numbers I heard were a lot worse than what you quoted tonight. You know, there's eight hundred staff that were laid off from the state in the last week or so, week and a half or so. They've closed a whole departments, like what my, my daughter works, they actually closed an education department. They just totally stopped it. So, you know, the state is in trouble and the state will be doing a lot of cuts. And I think the people in this room and your teaching staff, I mean, those people see what, what goes on every single minute of the day, and they can come back to you and say, hey, why don't we change this, or why don't we change that? And remember, no idea is a bad idea, they're all good ideas. So, so even if it sounds crazy, you know, I, I remember a twenty-year-old once saying, you know, we need to do this, this and that, and everybody says, ah, you know, that saved the company like ten million dollars. So, so no idea is a bad idea. I, you know, I think the morale, you talked, you know, a couple of comments in the room here about morale, the best way to fix morale is to get everybody to work together, everybody to contribute, to bring ideas and everything else, so. I have, I think there's a lot of room for you guys to, to, you know, find that money, and it sounds pretty rough right now, but I don't think it's that difficult, so. Good luck to you.
We appreciate your comments, and I think that was part of our plan, what we currently implemented, we try to include as many participants as possible in the process.
And the budget process, we always offer a faculty presentation about the budget prior to the budget being formulated for all levels of faculty, we need new leadership on a monthly basis, offer conversation. So we open up those conversations, there are some people, and there's many in the room tonight, which is great, that do email me and offer me feedback, but the vast majority don't. And so we just need to continue to work with the union leaders in all the different areas to encourage that. And I know that that's why it was not planned at all, the timing, but the fact is Monday, by having the nine union leaders together, the charge, one of the charges they're leaving with is to help us get the message back to their groups and power them to be the conduit to then bring those ideas back to us in a short term, so then we can have a further conversation. So it was very timely that we had that planned, again, not knowing this at all, two months ago, when we met initially as union leaders. So we want to use that group, that's what their role is, to be that leader, to help us with that morale, help us get that encouragement, so I'm confident, it was a great first meeting. We had a great time in that room, and there were a lot of smiles, there was a lot of good discussion, a lot of eye-opening experiences because people saw different roles that they never knew about and how, what they meant. And I think having that diverse group rather than a group of all, like, role people was actually better, so we want to capitalize on that. And Mr. Kennedy and I had a conversation about that last Friday, how having diverse groups of thought is also helpful, so we'll definitely be certain to give credit where credit is due when we come to the meeting on Monday, because I'm certain there'll be ideas from that group.
Anyone else? Any further discussion?
I'll get the answer. I'll get you your information request, and I actually have done the other question that Ms. Rowland Letterly asked for, so it's already done.
All right, can I have a motion for adjourned? Where adjourned?